I'm Dan Grottnick, Chair of the Commission and Director of the Department of City Planning. Welcome to today's review session of May 22, 2023. We're joined today by Vice Chair Knuckles, Commissioners Benjamin Bozorg-Remote, Sirulo, Crowell, Gold, also Remote, Goodridge, Kermani, Marine, Osorio, and Rampershead, all here. Thank you all very much. And before we get to today's agenda, I just want to mention two events from the last week that helped to advance some of the Department of City Planning's key priorities. First, I was very grateful to have been part of an excellent discussion hosted by the New York League of Conservation Voters on the Mayor's City of Yes for Carbon Neutrality Initiative. It was a full house befitting a serious topic. To those who are interested, you can watch a video recording at youtube.com/NYLCV for the New York League of Conservation Voters. I also want to thank the New York State Association for Affordable Housing and NYSAPA President Jolie Milstein for convening a day-long conference on affordable housing. Among so many other participants, I, as well as our Executive Director Edith Souchen, participated in two separate panels about getting affordable housing built. This subject is top of mind in the Adams Administration, and we are working to advance other City of Yes initiatives, including our City of Yes for Housing Opportunity, which would remove outdated zoning obstacles to creating more and different types of housing in all of our communities. Finally, this weekend was May 20th, or 5-2-0, an annual tradition in which the Department of City Planning celebrates New York City's 520 miles of waterfront. This year's objective was to highlight efforts by members of the public, community organizations, and agency partners to enhance access to and awareness of unique shoreline spaces and opportunities in New York City. And while the rain on Saturday certainly impacted some of this year's offerings, I do encourage New Yorkers to visit ongoing exhibits at Socrates Sculpture Park in Astoria and the Naval Cemetery Landscape in Brooklyn this summer, as well as to sign up for the walking tour of the Bronx Harlem River Greenway on June 3 at WaterfrontPlan.NYC. So, as we move to today's agenda, I'd like to quickly note, we've made some changes to our review session pre-hearing presentations to make them a little more concise and to highlight public input received since the proposal was first certified as complete and entered into public review. This is intended to provide all essential information to the public and to you all in as straightforward a manner as we possibly can. So, today, we are starting with a proposed building at 534 Coney Island Avenue in Kensington, Brooklyn, that would create over 40 homes, nearly a dozen income-restricted, and include ground-floor retail. If approved, the building would be close to two bus stops, the Beverly Road Q and the train station, and also to Prospect Park. In Staten Island, we have an exciting proposal starting public review today that looks to fulfill one of the key commitments of the Bay Street Corridor Plan of 2019, a massive $230 million investment by the city and a great example of promises made and kept as part of a neighborhood planning process. We'll learn more about the status of this investment from the Departments of Administrative Services, Parks and Recreation, and Transportation to create a nearly 10-block-long waterfront esplanade in Tompkinsville. This stretch of open public space would provide New Yorkers with waterfront access near the Staten Island Railway and Lyons Pool Recreation Center, feature seating tables and bike lanes, and also include the construction of a new DOT pier for supplies coming and going from Staten Island. So, with that by way of introduction, let's get to it. Ryan, please take it away.
Yes, so that, just for the record, the time is 1:07 PM, and a quorum is present in the hearing room 120 Broadway. The first item on our agenda is the certification of a zoning map and zoning text amendment in Brooklyn Community District 12, and our presenter is Anithi Yasdi.
Welcome.
Community District 12, near the intersection of Coney Island Avenue and Beverly Road. The project area can be situated between the Kensington neighborhood to the west and the Prospect Park South neighborhood to the east, right below Prospect Park there. The project area is located along Coney Island Avenue at 100 feet, between Hinkley Place at 90 feet and Beverly Road at 80 feet, around six blocks to the south of Prospect Park. The project area enjoys access to subway and bus services with the Q Station at Beverly Road and Marlborough Road, and the Church Avenue Station offering F and G service. Bus lines B103, BM3, and BM4 also serve the area. Onto the surrounding area. As can be seen here, the project area is surrounded by six-to-seven-story mixed-use residential buildings, schools, multifamily walk-up apartments, one-to-two-family homes and automotive uses, all located together along a wide 100-foot arterial road, which is Coney Island Avenue itself. Directly to the north is MS 890, a middle school. There's an automotive repair yard directly to the east, along with a 7-Eleven and other retail options to the east. The project area itself is currently home to a gas station, KFC, and an approximately 3,200 square foot three-story residence. The surrounding area beyond Coney Island Avenue to the east and west are predominantly residential, including mostly single-family homes to the east and a mix of multifamily and walk-up buildings to the west. Coney Island Avenue itself contains a mixed patchwork of residential, commercial, and community uses, as land uses responded over time to the existing zoning. The eastern side of Coney Island Avenue has a mid-rise character, with buildings rising five and six stories and taller. This includes a six-story mixed residential and commercial building at 527 Coney Island Avenue, directly to the northeast. The project area itself has C-82 zoning. It extends northward from Beverly Road to Parkside Avenue on the west side of Coney Island Avenue. C-82 zones allow for up to 4.8 FAR, and typical uses include automotive showrooms, repair shops, warehouses, gas stations, and car washes. C-82 zones do not permit residential uses. The project area is also part of the Special Ocean Parkway District, which is on the west side of Coney Island Avenue. It's worth noting that the Special Ocean Parkway District was established in 1977 and was a response to the growing number of community facilities in the vicinity and concerns from the community about their impact on housing and the residential atmosphere in the area. As a result, new community facility developments or expansions were restricted to comply with the residential bulk regulations of the underlying districts. The SOPD does not, though, impact the study area as it currently is. The area just west of the study area is zoned R5, while the eastern side of Coney Island Avenue has a zoning of R6A and R7A with C24 overlays, due to the Flatbush rezoning of 2009. That rezoning restricted residential development further, with a stated aim of preserving the existing character and built form of the surrounding area. If you go further east, you will reach the R12 areas that make up the bulk of Prospect Park South, protected by a historic district since 1979. Finally, the area south of the project area is zoned R5 with a C23 overlay on the western side of Coney Island Avenue. Let's see the project area from the ground. The following is a view of the development site, drive-through KFC facing southwest from the intersection of Coney Island Avenue and Hinkley Place. Pictured is the development site, KFC, and nearby gas station, looking westward along Coney Island Avenue, that both make up the project area. Here is the gas station, again, visible along Coney Island Avenue. You can see that 100-foot arterial road there. Looking south, note the wide curb cut along Coney Island Avenue frontage itself, right next to that gas station. And here again, we see that 100-foot-wide Coney Island Avenue arterial road, looking northward, with the project area to the left, in purple and blue. And here is a look on the eastern side of the project area. This is not included in the project area, it's on the eastern side of the street, and you can see some of those disparate uses between the residential and automotive uses on the left-hand side of the street. That's 527 that I mentioned earlier. Let's talk about the proposed development. The applicant proposes to develop an 11-story mixed-use building with approximately 43 dwelling units, including 11 income-restricted units, ground-floor commercial space, and fronting the Coney Island Avenue itself. With regards to the massing, the proposed development will rise to a total height of 110 feet, or about 11 stories. The proposed building would be located adjacent to an R5 district and would be subject to transition rules. The building would contain an eight-foot side yard and rise to a maximum height of approximately 32 feet for a 30-foot area bordering that yard. The applicant plans to pursue MIH Option 1, to provide 25% of the residential floor area as income-restricted housing, at an average of 60% of area median income, with a minimum of 10% of housing at 40% of AMI. Accessory off-street parking will be available for 19 vehicles, so there's 16 parking spots required, they're providing 19. To facilitate the proposed development, the applicant first seeks a zoning map amendment from a C-82 to an R7X district with a C24 commercial overlay, seen in the dotted line area there. The R7X C24 district would be mapped along the frontage of Coney Island Avenue. A word about the R7D C24 area, the R7X area, the R7X districts are governed by the Contextual Quality Housing Bulk Regulation, and typically produce 12- to 14-story buildings and are found along major thoroughfares, and they must include interior amenities for residents. Buildings may rise to a height of 60 to 85 feet before a required setback of either 10 or 15 feet, after which buildings can rise to a maximum height of 145 feet with a qualifying ground floor. Off-street parking is required for 50% of market-rate units and not required for income-restricted units and waived if fewer than 15 spaces are required. The second action proposed is a zoning text amendment to amend Appendix F to designate the project area as an MIH area, with Option 1, where 25% of the units must be set aside for income-restricted housing, at an average of 60% of area median income, and Option 2, where 30% of units must be set aside for income-restricted housing, at an average of 80% of AMI. The applicant plans to pursue MIH Option 1. Pursuant to Local Law 78 of 2021, this application requires a racial equity report on housing and opportunity, because it would increase the permitted residential floor area by at least 50,000 square feet. The applicant states that the proposal would produce new income-restricted housing in a location that has low income and is highly accessible to transit and jobs. The median household income for Borough Park, Kensington, and Ocean Parkway is approximately $50,000 a year. Although this area experienced a population increase of around 8% between 2010 and 2020, new housing production increased by less than 3%. Between 2015 and 2019, an estimated 68% of households were rent-burdened, and 44% were severely rent-burdened, spending 50% or more of their income on rent. Population of Community District 12 is predominantly white, non-Hispanic, followed by Asian and Hispanic populations at 17% and 11%, respectively. The black, non-Hispanic population is around 2%. The area's Asian population increased by 31% between 2010 and 2020. The Hispanic population increased by around 3%. The area's black population increased by 13%. The white population decreased by 3%. In conclusion, the applicant is pursuing a zoning map amendment from a C-82 district to an R7X C24 district, and a zoning text amendment to facilitate a new 11-story multifamily residential building with 43 dwelling units, including 11 permanently income-restricted units, as well as ground-floor retail. Thank you very much, look forward to your questions.
Great, thank you very much, very clear. Let me just start with a couple of questions, and then we'll see who else has questions for you today. You noted a couple of pre-existing plans, districts, et cetera, in the area. One of them was the Special Ocean Parkway District from 1977. Can you just say a little bit more? I understand that this is in the Ocean Parkway Special District, but that the regulations of that district may not be applicable here. Can you just say a little bit more about that?
Yes, the Special Ocean Parkway District regulates the bulk of community facilities. There's also some rules around parking that is located on the frontage of Ocean Parkway itself, which this is not. So as such, because of the C-82 district itself, those SOPD requirements do not apply to the site as it currently exists. A lot of the SOPD regulations govern the bulk of community facilities, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, and then if we were to change the zoning to R7X with a C24 overlay, then the Ocean Parkway rules would apply?
I believe it's possible, but that's something I have to verify with.
Okay, all right. And then the Flatbush rezoning was the other rezoning or plan that you mentioned, so that is on the east side of Coney Island Avenue, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
And that zoned the area to an R6?
Well, the area directly to the east was primarily zoned R6, but the Flatbush rezoning of 2009, which was a whole package of different redesignations throughout a large area, redid that to an R6A, and so it established a contextual district on the eastern side.
Okay, and this, at R7X, it's a 5.9 FAR for residential, right? Okay, all right, got it, thank you. Commissioner Osorio?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the presentation. Really quick question, there, if, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's one bedrooms, two bedrooms, no three bedrooms, or are there three bedrooms proposed?
I'll double-check the unit count.
Okay, thank you.
I didn't see three bedrooms in the application materials, but I can verify and make sure.
Thank you.
Did not see any three bedrooms.
Thank you. Commissioner? Commissioner Goodridge?
I'm wondering if in projects like this where there are a lot of, well, you know, a considerable amount of parking spaces, if the developer doesn't use those parking spaces, could they use them for more apartments?
The...
Or it has to be used for parking?
If the developer provided fewer than 15 spaces or fewer, they could waive out of the parking, but the residential FAR of this zone would not be impacted. They couldn't, like, provide more housing if they didn't provide parking.
The parking spaces are proposed to be in the cellar, is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Yeah, so they would not, they're not be able to convert it.
Thank you. Commissioner, Commissioner Rampershead?
Thank you for the presentation. Speaking of the parking in the cellar, I just, maybe it's a graphical error, I'm not sure. In the cellar plan in our package, it looks like it's going down further. Is there a sub-seller to this building? Because they show parking going down another ramp at 5% slope. I'm just curious how that parking is going to work, because it looks like the spaces will back onto a ramp. So is it on the ramp? Just to clarify, and on Hinkley, they show four sets of trees just floating out there. I'm just curious, what was the line of thinking behind that on the site plan?
Oh, the trees here?
Yeah.
On Hinkley Place?
Yeah. I was curious, I guess they chose to treat it differently on Hinkley as opposed to on Coney Island. I was just wondering, what was the idea behind that?
I see. You're on their rendering?
Well, I'm looking at the site plan that's in our package.
Okay. And they've included some trees there, and you're asking why?
Those are existing trees.
Oh, those are, yeah, those are existing.
Okay.
Yeah, they're not very visible, because this is off-season here, and so the trees are less lush next to the KFC, but if you go at different times of the year, you'll see some nice foliage there.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Kermani?
Hi, thanks for the presentation. Just would want to know from the applicant, given the significant rent burden felt by the community, why not MIH 2? Like, what would that do to the financing to include extremely low, you know, there are no extremely low units? So in addition to Commissioner Osorio's question, I had the same, about why no three bedrooms? The offering of affordable units doesn't seem to match the level of rent burden felt in the community.
Understood. It's a better question for the applicant?
No, absolutely. Yeah, for the applicant, yeah.
They have gone with MIH Option 1.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't see other questions from the Commission, so thank you all, thank you for your presentation. This item is now certified, so we will see it back again soon enough. Ryan, let's move on to the next item.
Yes, the second item on our agenda is a certification of site selections and a city map amendment in Staten Island, Community District 1. Presenting for the first time is Razika Ghrish-Diasali.
All right, welcome.
Good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners. I'm Razika Devastay from Staten Island, presenting Tompkinsville Esplanade and DOT Pier Project. This is a public application submitted by New York City Department of Citywide Administrative Services, DCAF, Department of Transportation DOT, and Departments of Parks and Recreation, seeking two site-selection actions and a change in the city map to facilitate a new waterfront esplanade with a publicly accessible peninsula and a pier for DOT's dock builder's operations. The project is located in the Tompkinsville neighborhood of Staten Island, Community District 1, about half a mile south of the St. George Ferry Terminal and east of Tompkinsville Railway Station. As you can see, majority of the project is along the waterfront, with the proposed esplanade highlighted in red and the proposed DOT pier highlighted in red dotted line on the bottom slide, on the bottom page. The city committed to Tompkinsville Esplanade Project as a part of points of agreement from the Bay Street Corridor Neighborhood Plan, approved in 2019 and located west of the project site. This plan intends to connect the existing mixed-use town centers of St. George, Tompkinsville, and Stapleton by fostering a new walkable neighborhood with opportunities for new housing, businesses, and jobs. To the south of the project area is a special Stapleton Waterfront District, which was approved in 2006. The proposed esplanade is part of the new Stapleton Waterfront Development, which will lead to the creation of a continuous esplanade that will run generally between the extension of Greenfield Avenue to the south and the extension of Swan Street to the north, adjacent to the proposed DOT pier. The existing temporary location for DOT's dock builder is just located south of the proposed location, as is shown in with the orange dot on the screen. The proposed development would be funded by both New York City Capital Funds and FEMA and the city's Neighborhood Development Fund, NDF, have funded approximately dollar seventy-four million for the planned public esplanade. The relocation of the DOT dock builders is targeted by twenty-twenty-three to align with the completion of the new Stapleton Waterfront Phase One. FEMA and the city's NDF have funded dollar seventy-eight million for the DOT pier. The area surrounding the project site is primarily characterized by expansive irregular-shaped blocks and lots, as well as few map streets near the waterfront. There are a variety of surrounding land uses within the six hundred feet of the project site, including public utilities, maritime-related, recreational, institutional, parking facilities, transportation-related, commercial, retail, public open spaces, mixed-use developments, and multi-unit residential buildings. Buildings are generally low-to-mid-rise structures. The waterfront is largely zoned for heavy commercial uses and manufacturing, and mapped with the C eight-one and M two-one district. The area northwest of Victory Boulevard is zoned C four-two, which includes three- and seven-story multi-unit residential buildings, as well as a single-story commercial building. Further west, the area, including the Staten Island right-of-way, was rezoned as part of the Bay Street Corridor rezoning, as previously mentioned. This area is zoned R six with a C two-four commercial overlay and is an MIH area. This area also includes a gas station and a fast-food restaurant and an ad-grade parking lot for Minthron Street businesses and a plaza. Both the proposed location for the new peninsula and the DOT pier are currently city-owned properties and will only require site-selection actions to facilitate the development. Moving on towards the project views, starting with the image on the left, Murray Herbert Avenue, looking south towards the proposed DOT pier, and Miller's Launch, looking north to the right-hand side of the screen. Next, moving along the, north along the same avenue, the image on the left is looking south at the intersection of Hannah Street and Murray Herbert Avenue. The image on the right is looking north from Hannah Street at the intersection with Murray Herbert Avenue to an ad-grade accessory parking lot in Lyons Pool. Further north on the avenue, the image is looking at an existing barrier. I'm having some technical difficulty, here we go. So further north on the avenue, the image is looking at the existing barrier between the road and the waterfront. The image on the right is looking north is towards the existing peninsula, which is deteriorating and falling apart due to damage from Superstorm Sandy. Next are the views along the Bay Street Landing facing north towards the ferry terminal, and the last two views shows the existing condition of the waterfront adjacent to the Bay Street Landing, and again, here is another example of the deteriorating waterfront conditions. So the proposed locations for site-selection actions for Victory Point along the esplanade and DOT pier are represented in the red dotted lines here, and the mapping action for Murray Herbert Street, Victory Boulevard, and Lyons Pool are represented in the blue dotted line. So starting with Victory Point for site-selection action, the existing peninsula as seen before will be named Victory Point. The existing peninsula at the eastern end of Victory Boulevard would be completely revamped as a city-owned public open space. The existing pier would be replaced in kind by a new riprap revitment along the perimeter of the peninsula, which would allow the peninsula to be rebuilt to support a broad park-like section of the esplanade. Victory Point would extend out into the water and would compromise approximately twenty-one-thousand hundred and ten square feet or zero-point-four-eight acres as a city-owned local park, serving the surrounding area to be maintained by New York City Parks. It would feature a mostly passive recreational setting with views of the water. The ten-foot-wide permeable asphalt paved bike path extending to the length of the proposed esplanade would also curve through the peninsula and pedestrian walkways would be interspersed with landscape islands through Victory Point. Sitting areas with benches and landscaping would also be provided. The presence of an existing DEP stormwater drainage vault and conduit within Victory Boulevard, displayed in the pink on slide, would require modification of drainage conduit that discharges from the vault. The conduit would be shortened and a new outfall and head wall would be constructed within the riprap revitment of Victory Point. This CSO outfall replacement would be coordinated with Department of Environmental Protection. The Victory Point will be under Department of Parks jurisdiction with a DEP MOU for the CSO maintenance. The site selection would allow the city to maintain the area as a publicly accessible open space and recreational area. The following slide shows the section across the Victory Point. The proposed riprap revitment is designed to maintain resiliency for sea-level rise and storm surge wave from the nearby Atlantic Ocean. And this rendering shows the transformed peninsula, which would provide a pedestrian-friendly space for the rest or pause to experience the waterfront. Now, moving towards the second site-selection action for DOT's dock builder pier. DOT intends to construct a new purpose-built permanent pier, use group seventeen-C, a DOT Operations and Maintenance Building, use group six, and associated pier entry and new curb cut, serving the DOT dock builders' field operations. This new development would provide critical infrastructure and homeport for the DOT's maritime support, water-dependent workforce, the dock builders, to provide critical repair and maintenance services to the Staten Island ferry system and other DOT's waterfront facilities across all five boroughs. The proposed pier would serve as a homeport to receive lumber deliveries for dock builders' operations and store the lumber on-site until it's barged to where it's needed in the city. The DOT Operations and Maintenance Building would be constructed pursuant to the site's existing zoning, M two-one. It would be a two-stories, forty-feet tall, approximately thirty-foot wide by ninety-foot long, and includes two-thousand-four-hundred-and-twenty-eight square feet of area. The pier would be accessible to both passenger and commercial vehicles via proposed vehicular lamp. The new esplanade at the location of the pier would include pavement markings to alert esplanade pedestrians and bicyclists of the presence of an active vehicle crossing. Materials would be delivered to the pier via tractor trailers and flatbed trucks, which are expected to arrive and be received by DOT dock builders every two to three days or an average of two trucks per week. This rendering is from the Murray Herbert Avenue, facing southeast towards the esplanade and the proposed DOT pier, and maintenance building can be seen in the background. All loading and unloading of the material for DOT's dock builders would occur on-site and not on the street or planned esplanade. Moving on towards the second part of the proposal, city map action to map Murray Herbert Avenue and eastern part of Victory Boulevard towards the waterfront. Lyons Pool and an adjacent ad-grade parking lot to the south would be mapped as parkland, which compromises the northeastern approximately hundred-and-forty-thousand-and-ninety-four-square-foot portion of city-owned block four-eighty-seven, Lot Hundred, and are bound by two street segments to be mapped, Murray Herbert and Victory Boulevard, as well as Hannah Street to the south. The existing Murray Herbert Avenue between Hannah Street and Victory Boulevard would be mapped as Cromwell Promenade to a width of sixty-two feet, including bike lanes. Hannah Street, as previously mapped, was not a complete network, and the city map change will eliminate the portion of Hannah Street, turning it into Cromwell Promenade. The planned publicly accessible waterfront esplanade would extend along the coastline directly east of the project area, along the shoreline, and would not be mapped as a part of the street. The proposed sixty-two-foot right-of-way for Cromwell Promenade would include the existing fifteen-foot-wide sidewalk bordering Lyons Pool, a thirty-foot-mapped roadway consisting two eleven-foot-wide travel lanes, one in each direction, as well as an eight-foot-wide parking lane. Victory Boulevard would be mapped to a width of eighty-six feet from the terminus of Cromwell Promenade to the Staten Island right-of-way, which corresponds to the dimensions of Corporate Council Opinion, CCO, for the street. Consistent with the current conditions, the proposed eighty-six-foot right-of-way for Victory Boulevard would include a twelve-foot-wide sidewalk on its north side, twenty-four-foot-wide sidewalk adjacent to Lyons Pool, and a fifty-foot-mapped roadway. This plan shows the adjacent proposed esplanade to Cromwell Promenade, which will have a permeable asphalt bike path, landscape, and street elements along the waterfront, and a five-foot-wide planted buffer would separate the ten-foot-wide bike lanes from Cromwell Promenade. The esplanade will cut through Miller's Launch, which is an active maritime business along the Murray Herbert Avenue to be Cromwell Promenade, and the slide here details the measures taken to ensure the pedestrian safety along the shared part of the esplanade. Protective barriers, pedestrian gates, and access gates will be installed along the twelve-foot shared path. The section cutting through the esplanade shows the ten-foot-wide bikeway separated by green infrastructure from both sides and the eight-foot pathway along the water edge. And this rendering is facing east towards the New York Harbor, showcasing the proposed esplanade and the bike path. To summarize, the city seeks to site-select two city-owned properties located on the waterfront at the eastern terminus of Victory Boulevard to be maintained as public open space by New York City Parks with maintenance funds from Miller's Launch. The proposed open space is permitted as of right under the site's existing zoning and would be a local or neighborhood facility. The city also seeks to site-select a city-owned property located on the waterfront to construct a new purpose-built permanent pier and operations and maintenance building for DOT dock builders. The proposed water-dependent transportation-related use is permitted as of right under the site's existing zoning and would be a regional facility serving the entire city. As the proposed sites are city-owned and involve capital funds, the public design commission's review and approval is necessary for Tompkinsville Esplanade and DOT dock builders' pier development proposal. The proposed city map amendments, if approved, would help to provide a safe waterfront area for a wide range of users and create direct connections to the waterfront, thereby improving biking and pedestrian networks and formalized parkland. It is expected to help transform the Tompkinsville waterfront area and reconnect the surrounding community with the New York upperby. Thank you, and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Great, thank you, excellent job, really, really appreciate it. Let me just start with a few. This is a great, this is really exciting, and I think this is going to be transformative for this area, and I can say with certainty that the first time that the local council member walked me around the neighborhood, she was pointing in this direction, reminding me and everybody of commitments that had been made, and here the city is delivering on those commitments, which I think is really, really excellent. So let me just talk about the, so you noted at the front that this was part of the points of agreement of the Bay Street Corridor Plan from two thousand and nineteen, and then it also was part of a new Stapleton development project from two thousand and six. Can you just say how those two things interact with one another?
So the funding that the project has received is from the points of agreement through Bay Street Corridor Project, but this two thousand and six Stapleton, like, the Stapleton District is the, like, the part of the project location is in that district. So that's why we have mentioned the district over here.
I see, so it's in the district?
Yeah.
The funding is the result of commitments that the city made in two thousand and nineteen?
Yes.
Okay, and, okay, so we have a couple of site selections here, pier, and for the open space at Victory Point. Then we have several mapping actions, Lyons Pool from R three-two to Park, and then we have all of the excitement on the promenade, so I wanted to talk about that just for a minute. So you have Murray-Hulbert Avenue, which would be mapped as Cromwell Promenade, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and Victory Boulevard would be a mapped, would become a mapped street?
Yes, it's right now.
And today it is a CCO street. Can you just say a little bit about what it is and what it will become?
So CCO is the Corporate Council Opinion, which is like, the street has been used like, first decade or more, and right now it's currently not mapped. It exists, but it's not mapped, so this action will just map the street.
Okay, so today it's used as a street?
Yeah.
It's just not officially recognized as a street under our official designation?
Yes.
Is that right? Okay, and the maintenance of Victory Boulevard, will that be maintained by the, well, who's maintaining all of this? Victory Point is maintained by the Parks Department, correct? DOT pier is maintained by DOT, correct?
Yes.
And the promenade, who is maintaining the promenade?
So, I have a slide here which shows all the four actions, like, the mapping action for Murray Herbert Avenue, its current jurisdiction and its proposed jurisdiction. So the Victory Boulevard will be maintained by DOT, and like, right now it's under DPR's jurisdiction, but then it will be under DOT's jurisdiction, and the DOT pier will be as well as under DOT's jurisdiction. And as mentioned, Victory Point, the peninsula, will be under Parks jurisdiction with an MOU for DEP to access and maintain the CSO outfalls.
Okay, so Victory Point is, would become Parks.
Mm-hmm.
Victory Boulevard, which is, it feels like and will be a street, is DOT, and Murray-Hulbert, which I will recognize preemptively as Cromwell Promenade, is DOT?
Yes, it will be under DOT, proposed. Right now it's SBS and DCAST.
Today it's SBS and DCAST, and will be DOT.
Yes.
Um...
I'm sorry, because Miller's Launch, SBS.
All right, okay, good, thank you, and then last question for me, on the pier, the DOT pier. So this will be an opportunity for the city to use this space for repair of our various water-based infrastructure. Tell us a little bit about what that includes?
So the site that is proposed here, it will store the lumber that will be needed to replace the piers over the time, throughout the whole city. So the lumber will be delivered here, like, once or twice a week, they will be stored here, and whenever a pier needs, say, a pier needs to be replaced or changed, it will the, barged through the bash, the lumber will be transported over there. So it's just a storage facility, yeah.
What about repair of any vehicles or any ferries and things like that?
I'm not sure about that, I will confirm it and ask the applicant.
Okay, all right, okay, so at a minimum, we have storage of materials for pier replacement citywide?
Yes.
And perhaps repair of existing ferries and other boats, we're gonna confirm on that?
Yes.
Okay, okay, let me see what other questions we have here, okay. Commissioner Sorullo?
Thank you very much for your presentation. There's no particular order to my questions, but I'm gonna start with sort of the last, with the references to the different streets and the names. One of the, and I'm just wondering, in the process of getting to today, which I did not participate in, but am very familiar, I lived in this area and know the area very well, one of the things that's always been an interesting challenge, and anyone who's tried to use GPS to get anywhere near here, is thrown because of the multiple names of different streets that actually connect, but are, in many ways, one continuous road that continues to change names, which in this proposal actually gets worse in a way, because we're adding even newer names to some of the same roads. So I just wonder, and it'll be interesting what the community has to say about this, but you have Hannah Street, you have Front Street, you have Murray-Hulbert Way, you have Victory Boulevard, all in, really in one network, that brings you to the same exact place regardless of where you're coming from, and I just wondered if there was any thought in the process of creating a singular name for this roadway network so that it made more sense? And I don't know if that was a discussion, and it might have been rejected, I don't know, but it seems like there was, there's potentially an opportunity, obviously with community input and all of that, about whether or not there's some way to simplify what happens when you're coming over Hannah or coming up from Front, and you're getting to this point where you're only going in one direction, and then the name keeps changing as you go every fifty feet. George, I see you getting up.
Yes, we actually were in correspondence with the Borough President's Office from January, and the former land use director said that they were preliminary calling it Cromwell Promenade, but they did indicate in the email that they were in consultation with Councilmember Hanks to vet that name. Again, this was in January, and that land use director is no longer with the Borough President's Office, but we can follow up with the Borough President's Office to see if there's a better naming convention for the...
Yeah, and I'm not suggesting I know the answer to that, but I just feel like even in the description of this project, we, if you look at all of this, they're all the same road connecting with completely different names, and I'm just wondering, for emergency access, you know, this doesn't become easy. I mean, Victory Boulevard is the best example, which is significantly below grade from Victory Boulevard, and actually not, you wouldn't think of it as Victory Boulevard. I know it's the access point to Bay Street Landing, so I understand that, but I just wondered, it's, again, this is the beginning of the process of public review, but I think it might be an interesting conversation for us to pursue.
Definitely, yeah. And I know as you go further down, Murray-Hulbert or Hannah turns into Front Street, and there's a lot of different names, so we can definitely document this.
Lots of different names that, again, we're trying to tie this all together now, and maybe, you know... and maybe, you know, maybe there's an opportunity, and, and what, what is clear to me, and not to open a can of worms, but Murray-Holbert is, is named after someone, and it seems, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that disappearing from the map street names now? And is that been a consideration, or, or, or is there a plan to do something else to recognize that person who was obviously memorialized with this street name at some point in time?
Right, I mean, that's a great question, we can ask DOT and the applicant representatives to speak on behalf of that. I know that when we looked up the research, we were even confused ourselves because the city map says one street-
I know.
-the DOT green signs is another name-
I know.
-so sometimes names are, uh, or street names are given for, um, honor, which may not be reflected in the city map, but we can ask DOT-
Yes.
-if there's some history to Murray-Holbert and what the actual green DOT street sign would say.
There, there was a point in, which I remember very well, actually, I would take responsibility for this and put the different hat on, that street names did not necessarily change the city map, they were, they were done to add to the name to memorialize someone, um, and, uh, so that is very possible, I just want to raise the issue because-
Oh, yeah, it's a great, great question.
-it seems that it's disappearing at some point unless there's some other memorial that's being put in that location somewhere, um, so I just throw that out there. Um, a couple of other things there, and I'm looking at, on the slides, there is a, a- and, and forgive me this, okay, let me go with this one's easier. Is there a design plan for the DOT Pier? I realize that, what the uses will be, um, so I have a couple of questions about the pier. One is, will it be accessible in the event the city ever de- decided to expand the ferry services that connect other boroughs, um, and other neighborhoods of our city, where this is potentially a location where New York City Ferry could connect to the North Shore of Staten Island, um, so that's just one question. Two is, while we know it's a storage facility, this is also on the waterfront of pursuant to the Stapleton rezoning, um, that might actually front, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, you know, I'm, what the relationship between the pier and potential development on land might be at this location, because this, it's hard to tell on the rendering where it fits with respect to developable property along the waterfront, um, and what it will look like when a two-story storage facility is built on the waterfront in front of what is proposed to be residential housing. So I just, again, it's not necessarily answers I need now unless we know, but I think it will be very helpful to us to see a proposed design of this and the relationship that this site has to what may or can be developed along the waterfront on the land portion of what would be in front of this, along Front Street. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so to answer the first question, I will let the applicant speak on it, what are the proposed, like, other uses for this area, for this pier, and currently the DOT's dock builder building, which you see in the orange or darkish orange color on the screen, is what will be two stories. Rest is just going to be a pier where they're going to, uh, stockpile and like store lumber. So the two-story structure will only be that orange area, which you can see in this rendering, so this white structure in the background will be that, uh, maintain that building, and then the pier, you can faintly see the railing and the pier extending into the water behind that person like with the stroller.
Oh, I see, I see the pilings, okay, that's, okay, mm-hmm.
So that's how it will look, and they will have markings on the, uh, thing as mentioned here, or on the esplanade, to, uh, make the, uh, pedestrians or bicyclists aware that this is an active crossing.
Okay.
And in regards to other residential developments or potential residential developments, this is-
Further south.
Those are further south.
Further south, okay.
Yeah, Parcel A, Parcel B, um, HPD, the, the HPD site, which is going to be housing is further south, as well as the temporary location for the dock builders, um, they have a temporary home-
Yep.
-in that area, and they have to move-
Yep.
-so that, uh, the housing project can go forward.
So this is more just south of, say, Miller's Launch?
Yes.
So it's closer on the crazy road?
Before it starts, yeah, going inland.
Before it starts to S-turn or R-turn?
Then the DEP site and, okay, and I have one, I, I, I'm sorry to take, just one
further question, um, actually there were two, but I'll, I'll list one now and I'll come back. On the, on the rendering where you showed the Cromwell Promenade, which was by the Lions Pool, which is a whole other project, which is not, not connected to this application, but just to talk about sort of the exciting thing that's happening here, um, the, the sort of expansion of Lions Pool and Cromwell Center, um, is another incredible addition to, you know, to what's happening in this area, where you, you talked about that fit, I think this is the one where part, the sidewalk, is the street being widened here, is that what's happening?
It, it's being mapped.
It's just being mapped?
Cromwell Promenade is being mapped, and it's going to include bike lanes and part of the esplanade now, but in terms of the expansion of Lions Pool, the Mary Dalton, um, new facility is going to be built, when we can-
Above-
It's going to be built in the vacant parking lot that's directly north or right of Hannah Street.
Yes.
And that's currently zoned as R32, so this is an effort to clean up the map, similar to what, uh, Chair Garadnik was saying about, um, cleaning up the map, making sure the CCOs are now mapped, and establishing it as actual park because it's going to be a new rec center built in-
No, it's fan- it's fantastic. I guess my question was, when you look at the, the rendering here, there, there's parking along the curb line, what would look like the south part of this-
Oh, y-
-which is really the north, in real life, but, yes.
Perpendicular to the water, yeah.
And I, I couldn't tell if that was being lost or not for the, which would be ten Bay Street Landing?
We can double check, TR, uh, Technical Review Division has the official alteration map-
Okay.
-and we can, we can double check the parking layout.
Okay, I appreciate that very much, thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, and before I go on to, uh, Commissioner Gold, Benjamin, and Knuckles, and perhaps others, um, I did want to note in memory of George Murray-Holbert that he was the Commissioner of Docks and the Director of the Port of New York City, starting in nineteen eighteen, he was elected President of the Board of Aldermen of New York from nineteen twenty-one to twenty-five, and served as Acting Mayor of New York City during the illness of John Francis Hyland, he later became a federal judge. Just of note, I, I thought, for the interest of the conversation, uh, and Commissioner Cerulo's point about, uh, lots of names, I will, I will just as a, as a side note, I did not sponsor, uh, street co-namings during my time in the city council because of my concern of confusion and, uh, and the, the, uh, abundance of them around the city, but alas, uh, for those that, that have this distinction of streets and things like that, it's certainly important to remember them. Okay, uh, let me go on to, uh, Commissioner Gold.
Thank you, and, uh, Chair, the one detail, uh, that you missed because you started in the middle was he was a congressman first, uh, so, uh, but, but the rest is actually a pretty impressive bio, so, thanks for that. Um, so this is actually, um, might be terrific, uh, program, um, from a public access standpoint, it's great, it's a beautiful, uh, waterfront, um, I, I actually, during the time of Sandy, I actually office, uh, not far from there, right on the water, and so that, uh, brings me just to, to the natural question, um, but I just want to say it's great, you know, as you figured out, um, funding committed, um, partially by FEMA, um, the, the question I have in there is, we talk about, uh, this being, giving us the opportunity to be more resilient to, uh, storm surge, uh, flooding, um, would love for, when, when the moment is appropriate, unless we know, for the applicant to just discuss what those changes are that are being made, and as I say, I, I office literally on that waterfront, and it was quite a while before we were able to go back to our office during Sandy because the flooding, um, was quite intense in that area. Um, so, um, again, I don't know if that's a question for us or a question for the applicant, but would love some more detail on the opportunity that this has created for us to, to make it a more resilient area on the storm surge front, is, you know, Sandy certainly brings that to mind.
Sure, I'll, I'll ask the applicant to answer to that question, and they can provide more details.
Perfect, perfect, and just, and, and as I say, um, the, the part two is, you know, more broadly, um, when we look at, um, the dock builders', uh, location of the build out there, if there are any effects essentially to, you know, both waters or incrementally created storm surts that, that, that creates, you know, basically is there any downside to it, but beyond that, I mean, it looks like an amazing project, thank you.
Sure, I'll also let applicant, uh, answer to that question.
Perfect, thanks.
Thank you for the questions.
Thank you very much, thank you, Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Benjamin.
Hi, it was a great presentation, um, I know more about the area than I have in many, many years, um, but I had a question about why some of the area is being mapped park while other is just open space.
Uh, so, the mapping action will only be for this Lions Pool and the, uh, parking lot adjacent to it, and the streets, the, those are the only two things which are being mapped as a mapping action for this project.
Right, and why are some of the other areas, the promenade, uh, not the promenade, the, um-
Esplanade?
Yeah, why is that not being mapped as park?
Hmm, I-
So, the, the, my understanding from the, the, um, the point, the, what's it called, uh-
Victory Point?
Victory Point, since there is a CSO outfall there, that the, um, relationship between DEP and, uh, Parks gets infinitely more complicated when it is a mapped parkland where they're trying to put DEP infrastructure, and so for ease of that relationship, if my, and George stepped in, that, that leaving it as open space with a, an MOU spelling out who does what and, and, you know, having Parks sort of as main jurisdiction is, um, just the best way to do this.
Right, and regards to Victory Point, that relationship gives you as much easing as possible, so that's why they didn't do that, and even further south, there's private property-
Yes.
-so we can't, um, I guess, um, Parks would not want to zone, make the, make the zone change from, I guess, R32 to Park, on parcels that are private property, Miller's Launch is a private business, and they're going to remain, uh, there on site, so.
What is the underlying zoning?
R32.
Since it's not going to be Parks?
Right now it's R32, and it's something that I guess should have been corrected a while ago, which is why we're cleaning it up now with this U-Lerp application.
So in the future, let us say, when we're all gone from here and-
We all have streets named after us.
Right, um, someone could build housing there. I mean, the city owns, but the city-
Today they could, but in the future it's going to be zoned as park, it'll no longer have an R32 designation.
Um, it, could you explain for me, please, the difference between being mapped as park, um, under state law, and being zoned as park under ZR?
Um, I could try, I mean, I'll, I'll check with our, I'll check with our Technical Review Division, but go ahead.
Let me take a crack at this, uh, so, actually, anything that is used for a park purpose, um, a- and, and has sort of cracks like a park, is, is considered a park for the terms of, like, you can't alienate it, and so in fact, Parks Department is sort of very, very, um, careful about those things, um, in terms of park use-
Until they want to use it for something else.
And, and I would argue that Victory Point looks like park use, and so to come along and try to build housing, one, it's, uh, the site would be sort of impossible to develop, um, i- i- is, is unlikely, uh, given that it is, it would have a long history of park use and, and a, and a disposition, or, no, a, a, a site selection action that's sort of designated it for this use, so we are taking it, you know, this is an official act saying this is going to be for this use, uh, and it can't actually be for another use unless there's another action for that, right? We'd have to do a disposition or whatever.
And my apologies, though-
Or a marital override.
Uh, uh, no, uh, marital override is only for zoning, this would be, um, for the use of, like, this would be a city action, so we'd have to take another, another action similar to U-Lerp to, to undo this, this is not a zoning action, this is a site selection action. Um, and then in terms of the, um, the other, uh, uh, you know, strips of, of land that are part of the esplanade, one of them is in a mapped street, is my, in my, would be in, in part of the mapped street, am I correct there?
Which was, which is in the mapped-
That's part of the esplanade that is adjacent to the, um-
Cromwell Promenade.
Cromwell Promenade, that would be in a mapped street, so, mapped street. And then as, as George said, uh, the other portions are on private property, and so there needs to be, are we doing easements or some kinds of MOUs for the access there?
Yes, and, and there's a separate application, which is not U-Lerp, which is for the private property that's north, which is just a legal document action, which is a chair, sort, it's a certification that would correct the easement, which has clearly been Xeroxed multiple times, has some, uh, uh, illegibility to it, which is being cleaned up and, and aligned with the, the Bay Street Landing, which is north, um, of the site, just, just left of the C3 in the top right-hand corner. And apologies, I think I misunderstood your question before about the R32.
Yeah, you-
Victory Point, as you can see here, is zoned C81, and then there's also below that an M21, um, the portion that's being now mapped as park, mapped as park, is the, the little L shape that's below the word Lions Pool, that little L is currently R32, and that's what is the existing parking lot, that'll be mapped as park, the parking lot will turn into a new three, four-story, um, facility, um, which we can show renderings of later, it's, it already went through the PGC process, I believe.
That would be helpful.
It is not subject to the U-Lerp.
And I would echo, uh, Commissioner Cerulo that if we could see DOT's real full site plan-
Mm-hmm.
-for their pier, that would be, I, I don't expect it now, but that would be very helpful to understanding exactly what is going to go on in that pier, and what the pier apron will look like, and how many barges, what the dimensions are, how many barges could be there at once, um, as you know, many times facilities start out as being for solely one innocuous purpose, and then before you know it, Fred has garbage barges that are waiting there for some other load.
Yeah.
That could never happen.
Yeah, we'll definitely ask them, and, um, I'm only standing up here so long because I was the previous project manager and receivable, somehow put together a presentation in one week as new lead planner-
Well, you did a great job.
In response to that, I'll say that as, as we were reviewing this project the past two years, our capital planning development, or our capital planning division was in conversation with, um, the entire applicant team, um, the applicants and applicant representatives about some conflicts that could occur, so we ensured our capital planning team ensured that bollards, materiality, striping, textured pathways were implemented to avoid pedestrian and bicycle, bicycle conflicts with vehicles and logistics and trucking, so we'll definitely make sure that DOT confirms the operations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner, let me go to Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yeah, I just had a quick question about, uh, Victory Boulevard, CCO, the, the mapped portion of, I had never seen that CCO terminology before, is that, is that a part of the city map nomenclature or something, CCO?
Corp Counsel-
This is a Staten Island, uh, specialty.
Corp Counsel Opinion, it is something less than a, uh, something more than a, that a registered-
A record street.
A record street-
A record street.
But is not quite a mapped street, so you got record street, which is on, it's, it's, it's recognized out there, and it may or may not actually be a street in function, you have a Corp Counsel opinion where it likely is used as a street but is not actually designated as a street, and then you have a, a mapped street, which is both, well, it is, it is officially a street and is usually used as a street, although in some cases it is not. How did I do? Close enough?
Yeah, go ahead.
A, A minus, because there's also paper street.
Ah, George, okay, I'll take it, and what's a paper street?
Paper street's on the map, but it's never been improved, maybe it never got funding, but it's on paper, it might just be, uh, grassland.
Yeah, that term I've not just seen, but the CCO, Corp Counsel opines, that is, that is a street.
Yeah, after ten years, I'm not sure who officially requests or requests that to happen, but the, uh, City Corporation Council opinion is that it's been in use for ten years, and it can be designated as a street in lieu of the mapping process, but-
Defect of street, no.
But they would still have to acquire the property if they didn't already own it.
Okay, oh, yes, and then ownership and vesting of streets is a whole nother discussion aside from the actual map.
Great, thank you, let me see if there- Great, thank you. Let me see if there are other questions. Commissioner Osorio?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the presentation and I shared the excitement about this. I just, I'm wondering if when we see it next, maybe we can see a little bit in terms of, what are the potential opportunities for improving water quality? I think Ryan hinted at the connection or the, or at least understanding the relationship or the proximity to the C S O in terms of water quality. But I'm also interested in understanding whether there are opportunities or important concerns associated with legacy ground contamination associated with the industrial and specifically transportation facility sites up north and to the east of the site. Not for now, again, when we see this next, that'll be great. Thank you.
I'll let the applicant know.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Cerulo?
Just one quick question. I may have heard this just a little out of context, but at the beginning of the presentation, you referenced Phase One. Can you just share what, and distinguish between Phase One and what Phase Two or more may be in relation to this?
So, the Phase One that I mentioned was under the Stapletons, Waterfront District. So, I think E D C already has plans for the future development of the proposal. And so, this is the starting point where it will actually be a missing connection between the St. George and this area right now.
I got it. Okay, thank you, thank you.
Commissioner Benjamin?
On the D O T pier, will there be open storage permitted?
I'm not sure about that. I will get back to you on it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, with that, thank you very much. Great, yeah, give a round of applause.
Thank you.
Terrific job and a hard one for our first presentation. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioner.
Congrats. Okay, this item is now certified. Ryan, let's move on to item three.
Okay, the third item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review for a zoning tax amendment in Staten Island Community District Three. Our presenter is Amy Ovagaga.
Good afternoon, Commissioner.
Hello, Amy.
Hello, and Chair Garatnik. I am presenting the fifty-six William Avenue application. This is a private application in the Special South Richmond Development District submitted by the Estates of Clement Marote, seeking a tax amendment to remove a portion of the designated open space from map three point four within Appendix A of Article ten, Chapter seven, on block fifty-two eighty-two. The tax amendment will facilitate the development of one two-family residence on Lot forty. The development site is encumbered by a small area of designated open space that prevents the development of the site and renders it undevelopable, undevelopable without this modification. The total area of designated open space proposed for removal is ten thousand seven hundred square, twelve square feet. Lot forty is vacant and unimproved, lacking trees and wetlands in an area that is predominantly built up. Only a portion of the development site is within the designated open space area. The designated open space runs along the southernly lot line of the development site, thereby preventing otherwise as-of-right development from occurring on the property. The Staten Island Community Board number three held a vote on April twenty-six, twenty twenty-three, recommending approval of the application by a vote of twenty-three in favor, none opposed, and no abstentions and without conditions. The Staten Island Borough President submitted a favorable recommendation without conditions as well. And to summarize, the requested action includes a tax amendment to remove a portion of the designated open space from map three point four within Appendix A of Article ten, Chapter seven, on block fifty-two eighty-two to facilitate the development of a detached two-family residence on Lot forty. And if there are any further questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Great, thank you. Thank you for being the first to experiment with our new system of pre-public hearing reviews. So, thank you for that. Questions? Great, thank you very much. We'll move on to the next one. Thank you.
The fourth item on our agenda is a post-referral review of authorizations in Brooklyn Community District One. Our presenter is Corinza Wood. Jonah, are you covering for her? Oh, okay. Actually, this, oh, Corinza. Oh, the pole? Greenpoint?
Yeah.
All right, this is, it was withdrawn?
Oh, no, 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 not, no.
Oh, it's been laid over. Sorry. Sorry, I didn't study email. Okay, so, that's, that's quicker, maybe. The fifth item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of a letter of intent to acquire office space in Brooklyn Community District Seven, and our presenter is Juki Sai.
Juki?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Good afternoon. This is an application for a one ninety-five notice of intent to acquire office space, jointly sought by the New York City Human Resources Administration, H R A, and the New York City Department of Citywide Administrative Services, D C A S, to facilitate the use of one hundred fifty-eight thousand square feet of office space and up to two thousand square feet of parking lot by H R A at eight fifty Third Avenue in Sunset Park, Community District Seven, Brooklyn. Information Technology Services, I T S, creates and enhances the technology infrastructure and computer applications that support H R A's operations. H R A's I T S division is headquartered at fifteen Metro Tech Center in downtown Brooklyn, labeled on this map here with a blue star. Approximately six hundred fifty H R A employees work at fifteen Metro Tech. Due to insufficient available seating at H R A's fifteen Metro Tech space, I T S staff has also been placed at seven different facilities across Manhattan and Brooklyn on a temporary basis until more permanent space can be identified for those employees. Those spaces are represented here with blue dots. The current H R A lease at fifteen Metro Tech will expire in July twenty twenty-four. H R A does not intend to renew the lease due to insufficient space for I T S's current and future operational needs and because H R A is expecting a rent increase. This proposed office space would facilitate the relocation of six hundred fifty H R A employees from H R A headquarters at fifteen Metro Tech and provide an opportunity to consolidate them with the other I T S staff from seven other facilities across the city. The seats vacated at those seven other locations would be reallocated to other H R A programs with seating needs and anticipated growth. The project site is in the Sunset Park neighborhood of Brooklyn, near the waterfront. It is bounded by Second Avenue to the west, Third Avenue and the elevated Gowanus Expressway to the east, Thirtieth Street to the north, and Thirty-second Street to the south. The area to the north and south of the project site is developed with large warehouse buildings that contain industrial, commercial, and institutional uses. This includes Industry City and the Metropolitan Detention Complex. You can see those labeled here. To the west of the project area is South Brooklyn Marine Terminal, home to the Sims Municipal Recycling Plant. The area to the east of the project site across Third Avenue contains a mix of single-story industrial buildings and two-to-four-story residential buildings. To the east of that is a mix of local commercial use along Fourth Avenue. The project site is in the transit zone. The thirty-sixth street stop for the D, N, and R subway lines is roughly six blocks to the southeast of the building. And the twenty-fifth street stop for the R train is roughly six blocks to the northeast of the building. And you can see that labeled here. There are also several bus lines that serve the area and a protected bike lane that runs along Fourth Avenue. The project site is located in an M three one district that covers most of the Sunset Park waterfront as well as parts of Red Hook. It is located in the southwest Brooklyn industrial business zone. The area to the east of the project site across the elevated Gowanus Expressway is zoned M one two D. The project site is located at eight fifty Third Avenue, block six seven one, Lot one, and the adjacent parking lot at, excuse me, eight seventy Third Avenue, block six seven five, Lot ten. Block six seven one, Lot one, is improved with an eight-story, one million, one hundred thirteen thousand square-foot industrial building known as Liberty Brooklyn, formerly Liberty View Industrial Plaza. It includes a mix of manufacturing, retail, and commercial office space uses. These include large retailers, Bed Bath &amp; Beyond and Saks Off Fifth Avenue, as well as a couple dining kiosks. There's also an Amazon Flex facility on the first floor of the building. Block six seven five, Lot ten, is improved with approximately one hundred, with an approximately one hundred sixty-three, excuse me, one hundred and sixty-three thousand square-foot parking lot that serves Liberty Brooklyn visitors. And this is a photo facing the south side of the building. And you can see the locator map in upper right-hand corner. In two thousand eleven, the New York City Economic Development Corporation conveyed eight fifty Third Avenue to Solmar Properties LLC. The original deed included a deed restriction limiting the uses to industrial uses. That deed was modified in January twenty twenty to stipulate that up to two hundred sixty-eight thousand square feet within the third through eighth floors of the property may be used or occupied with commercial office uses. E D C has confirmed this action would not result in a violation of that deed restriction. In twenty thirteen, the property owner received a variance from the B S A that permitted retail use of more than ten thousand square feet on the first and second stores, stories of this building. Moving into some site photos.
Could we get an advance on the slides? We're having a problem with the clicker. Maybe just say next slide.
Next slide. All right. Oh, there we go. This photo looks south on Third Avenue. This photo looks north on Third Avenue. This photo looks northwest on Second Avenue. And this photo looks southeast on Second Avenue. The proposed development would consist of one hundred fifty-eight thousand square feet of office space, covering the entire seventh floor and part of the sixth floor of Liberty Brooklyn, as well as parking for two H R A vans, two H R A cars, and two electric vehicle chargers with an option for a few more spaces as well. The proposed office will accommodate approximately seven hundred sixty-three full-time employees daily. The majority of the proposed office will be an open office with operational spaces for each group, as well as a training room, print and copy rooms, pantries, restrooms, and wellness rooms. There will be a waiting area for visitors, who will consist mainly of non-I T S H R A employees, requiring repair or replacement of H R A-issued technology, or H R A employees attending training sessions. The groups to be relocated to the new facility include, among others, business solutions, which develops and maintains business systems for all operational areas within H R A, and H R A's infrastructure and operations, excuse me, I T S's infrastructure and operations, which provides the core technology infrastructure that enables delivery of internal business application services. And you can see the floor plans for the sixth and seventh floor on these slides. In summary, this is an application for a one ninety-five notice of intent to acquire office space, jointly sought by H R A and D C A S to facilitate the use of one hundred fifty-eight thousand square feet of office space and up to two thousand square feet of parking lot by H R A at eight fifty Third Avenue in Sunset Park, Community District Seven, Brooklyn. Thank you. I'll take any questions.
Thanks, Juki. Just one for me. So, if, if this were to be approved, how many square feet total would there be as commercial square feet in this building?
So, sorry, Commissioner, you're saying, or Chair?
Yeah, if, well, right now, we have a, there's a deed modification allowed for two hundred sixty-eight thousand square feet to be commercial. This would be one hundred fifty-eight thousand square feet. I guess what I'm asking is how many total square feet would be occupied by commercial space in this building if this were to be approved?
So, Chair, I don't have that exact number. I can ask the applicant?
We'll ask the applicant. No, no, that's good. And actually, my other question is for the applicant, for their benefit. On Wednesday will be other sites that were considered and how we should think about this in connection with the broader vacancy issues for commercial, but I'll save that for them. Let me go to the Vice Chairman.
Thank you for the presentation. Is this proposal leased for twenty years?
I'm gonna have to ask the applicant to speak to that. I don't have the terms on that. Sorry, Commissioner.
And this will have no client, outside client constituency for it? This is all I T for H R A?
Yes, it's all back office uses and H R A.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman, Commissioner Osorio, and then Commissioner Benjamin.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the presentation. I have a question for, for you. So, with the amount of vacant office space in the city right now, why, why here? What's, what sort of, what do you think, why do you think that, that the applicant is considering this particular site? I'm concerned that in the presentation, you didn't mention how across the street, you know, this city, E D C has a multimillion-dollar investment right now in terms of, or has facilitated a multimillion-dollar investment for offshore wind, which in my mind speaks to the potential of industrial job creation here. Of course, you have Industry City, which is already an existing commercial and, you know, office use, well, commercial, multi-commercial use. But, but so, I'm wondering if, in this particular time, you know, why are we, why aren't we maximizing the industrial development that we could create here with sort of like such an investment literally across the street in terms of offshore wind, yeah?
Commissioner Juki, let me just jump in for one second, because you should, you can feel free. But I will note that the question of why the city is picking or is attempting this spot, I think is an excellent question and also really best posed to the applicants. I mean, Juki, you should feel free to relay whatever they've said to you, but, you know, I think in this situation, it may make sense to pose it to the applicant, but you should feel free, Juki, if you, if you'd like to give it a whirl, but I have...
Thanks, Chair. I, I think the applicant has conveyed they have some site-specific needs. And I encourage you about, related to their office uses, and I encourage you to ask them about that. But I, I hear what you're saying, Commissioner.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that and I appreciate the advice. I think that in these cases, you know, although I agree in that this may be a question more for the applicant, I would like to understand what is the position of the department and whether there are any policies, anything that we can use as we think through these projects. So, any insight is greatly appreciated. Thank you for that.
It's a, it's a, it's a fair, totally a fair point and, you know, the department will also make its recommendation after the public hearing. So, let's have the public hearing, but I certainly encourage you to pose that question to the applicant here. Okay, let's go to Commissioner Benjamin.
I know this area well and have been involved in some of the projects here. And I have a, a couple of very specific questions about this building. One, is it, has it ever been fully occupied?
To my knowledge, I, I can't speak to facts of it's ever been fully occupied, but my understanding is that a reason for the twenty twenty deed restriction or the, the change in the deed restriction that permitted commercial office use was because they couldn't find tenants for the, the industrial space. So, I believe that was the logic behind the change. As far as the exact occupancy, I don't have that.
Okay, if you could let the applicant know and the city and the Economic Development Agency, that I'm very interested in the history. We spent a lot of time and money and spent a lot of effort looking at the opportunities in the city for M three and for manufacturing space and for keeping... in the city for M three and for manufacturing space, and for keeping that space available for new industries. We looked at other things across the street with automotive detailing and such, and the only thing that I've really noticed in this building is retail.
Yeah.
Um, and it doesn't seem, it's not clear to me that a, a fulsome effort was made by either the agency or by the owner to reach out to find those manufacturing uses that, I, my understanding in part was that they didn't want to be another Brooklyn Navy Yard, where they had small little spaces of ten thousand square feet to this tenant, and twenty thousand to another, that they wanted a major user to occupy a large portion. And if that's the case, I'd really like to know that and understand how that will affect the surrounding area as we take this one last building with significant M three space and decide we're going to basically convert it to an office building. Um, I know that's not your responsibility or concern, but if you could just convey to the applicant that I, at least, and I think others, the Chair indicated he was very concerned about that, particularly with the emphasis that was two years ago on Industry City, and trying to keep Industry City as manufacturing when it was clearly going elsewhere, uh, just down from there is Costco.
Yep.
And so it seems like this whole car, and then up from there is the Home Depot.
Yes.
And Jetco, Jet, Jetro?
Jetro, the culinary.
Yeah, so it seems like the amount of space that will be available for manufacturing use, particularly in these older buildings with large floor plates, is shrinking, and if we want to decide that as a policy, that's fine, but as we do it piecemeal, and as our Economic Development Agency tells us, it's okay. I think we need to be very conscious of what this waterfront area looks like, and the kind of jobs that they produce, that the jobs that are at Industry City now, and, you know, personally, I like Industry City, but a lot of them are retail jobs, and they are not the same as a manufacturing job, and they certainly don't pay what manufacturing jobs pay. So, I really would like to know the history of why this, and then, since we are so heavily invested in Metro Tech, who is backfilling that space? I mean, for, when a city agency says, we're moving out because the rent is too high, but some other part of our agency is gonna pay that high rent and move in there, that just sounds a little odd.
Commissioner Benjamin, I appreciate all that, and also to, it is our land use in Sunset Park very much is the concern of the Brooklyn office.
Yes, it is, and I, I appreciate that.
And our, our agency. Uh, a couple things, EDC will be here on Wednesday to speak, and I encourage you to ask them these same questions, and I believe they'll have a more thorough answer to that. Uh, as well, as far as the backfill, just to clarify, just specific to this application, I, from what I understand, I don't think there's a city agency plan to necessarily backfill the current Metro Tech space. Uh, I think the, just to, I, the consolidation is a little, there's a lot going on there, but the idea is that HRA headquarters is currently at fifteen Metro Tech, they would leave to eight fifty, and then the HRA employees who could not fit in fifteen Metro Tech and overflow to the other spaces would consolidate in eight fifty Third Avenue, and that was the, the plan there. As far as who would follow up in that current HRA space at six, excuse me, at fifteen Metro Tech, I don't have any specific info on that, but I don't believe there's plans for a city agency to, to fill that.
Okay, and in this office market, I'm not sure why Metro Tech gets to dictate how much, how much of a increase they would like when the space could go empty, but if you could convey to the agency, I'd also like a list of where the other agencies are currently.
Yes.
And who owns those buildings.
Understood. Thanks, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner. Let me go to Commissioner Goodridge.
I just wanted some, I got a little lost in the thought, clarification, I, um, it's a very urban planning issue that I just need some clarification on, it's a housing issue, I don't get it. So, is this specific area just supposed to be zoned for manufacturing? Is the issue that it's specifically just supposed to be zoned for manufacturing, and then this is not particularly, is that what? Okay.
Yeah, this is, this area is zoned for manufacturing, and as Jukey said, uh, at some time, the, um, city owned it, we sold it to this entity, um, BSA gave them a variance to allow them to use two hundred and something thousand square feet.
Two hundred sixty-eight thousand, yep.
Um, for retail slash office use, and so they have a market thing, and, uh, they used to have a Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, I think.
Still there. There's a few large retailers in, in the ground floor.
Yeah, um, so now they're coming back for a second bite of that apple that's non-manufacturing and saying, that wasn't enough, we need more non-manufacturing.
If I, if I may, there's just a slight clarification on that, and you can tell me if I've got this right, Jukey. So, um, in twenty twenty, the deed was modified to allow that two hundred sixty-eight thousand of commercial, um, and the BSA variance was for retail on the first and second floors.
Yeah.
Um, this, if this were approved, is within the two hundred sixty-eight thousand of the permitted commercial space that was changed in the deed restriction. So I just, just, uh, it's not actually more than what the deed restriction change had made, it's within that two hundred sixty-eight thousand if it were to be approved.
And when we say commercial, we don't, we're also including like government offices, it, it doesn't just have to be?
Yes, sorry, commercial office space, yes, and...
Not just retail.
Also, to your question, Commissioner Goodridge, to follow up on Commissioner Benjamin and the Chair, uh, the underlying M three one, I still, I believe does still permit office use. The restriction on that actual use group was in the deed of this specific building when it was sold by federal government, had EDC convey it to the current owner.
So this would, I think was mentioned earlier, it's only for a temporary amount of time, it's for twenty?
Typically, and I'll, I'll let the applicant speak to that, but, yeah, I, I think it, it's for a, a typical period of a city lease, which is twenty years, I, I, I don't want to say the exact amount of time, but it is, this would be the city renting this space for the term of the lease.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Osorio, back to you.
Thank you, Chair, and again, thank you for listening and, and, uh, eh, eh, exploring our concerns with us, greatly appreciated. Um, building on, on the list of questions for the applicant, not for you, um, eh, building specifically on the list of questions started by Commissioner Benjamin, it would be interesting to understand where is, where else has the city, meaning HRA, looked for potential office space, and, and how, what is the, the data that helps us understand why this was the best choice, as compared to how the, the owner has marketed that property? Uh, and then the, the last comment, I guess, is that even though I think you're right in the sense that the underlying zoning may allow this use, this is within a significant maritime and industrial area, therefore, we shouldn't be having office space here if, if we're going to honor the WRP and the city's long-term plan, right? So, I don't know, something else to think about as we keep thinking about these questions. Thanks again, I, I really appreciate it, and, and thanks for that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Other questions? Okay, uh, with that, thank you, Jukey, very much. Uh, this will go to a public hearing on Wednesday, and we know that the applicant will have a, a list right at the front. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, the sixth item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of a zoning map amendment in Brooklyn Community District Four. Our presenter is Joelle Miller.
Good afternoon, today eleven sixty Flushing Avenue's rezoning proposal will be presented for pre-hearing. This is approximately, excuse me, this is a private application in Bushwick, Brooklyn to facilitate...
Oh, it's a good point.
To facilitate an approximately one hundred eighty-nine thousand square feet, five FAR mixed-use development, including thirty-six thousand square feet of retail space, thirty-seven thousand square feet of industrial space, and one hundred and fourteen thousand square feet of office space. The applicant seeks a zoning map amendment from M one one to M one five. An EIS was conducted with DCP acting on behalf of the CPC as lead agency. The notice of completion for the DEIS was issued on January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. The DEIS identifies significant adverse impacts related to transportation, such as traffic and pedestrian concerns. Possible mitigation measures are identified in the DEIS and will be explored further in the DIS and FEIS. The DEIS hearing will be held on May twenty-fourth, this upcoming Wednesday. On May tenth, excuse me, on April tenth of two thousand and twenty-three, Community Board Four voted to approve the application with no conditions. Twenty-five voted in favor, twenty-five abstained, and one voted to disapprove. The board noted the project is in line with the board's industrial zoning and economic development priorities. Additionally, the board believes Evergreen Exchange's commitment as a community partner strengthens the project's contribution to the community. On May tenth, two thousand and twenty-three, Brooklyn Borough President voted to approve with the following conditions. The rezoning application is modified to remove non-applicant-owned lots twenty-nine and forty. The applicant enters into an agreement with the local community to ensure the proposed development is built in accordance with the applicant's description during GULR, and the applicant submits a commitment letter to the local community, the local council member, outlining their proposed development and any other agreements made with the local council member. Lot twenty-nine is currently zoned M one one with a maximum permitted commercial industrial FAR of one, and occupied by a one-story vacant commercial retail building, which is shown to my right, your left. And then lot forty is currently zoned M one one with a maximum permitted commercial industrial FAR of one. Lot forty is currently occupied by a single-story warehouse building, and a small northeastern portion of lot forty is occupied by a real estate of utilities company building. I am now available to answer any questions about the proposal.
Great, thank you very much. Let me see if there are questions, Commissioner Osorio.
Thank you, Chair, thank you so much for the presentation. I have, um, just actually one quick question, I'm wondering if, uh, eh, when we, when the applicant comes in, if we can hear the response to the Borough President's recommendation to take out lots twenty-nine and forty from the actual rezoning areas, or, or understanding, you know, why do we need to include them to fulfill the expected potential of the action? Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Pose that to the applicant, let's see who else, any other questions? Okay, uh, this one's up for public hearing, we'll see them Wednesday, and can ask them, uh, all the follow-ups. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
The seventh item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of a special permit in Brooklyn Community District Seventeen. Our presenter is Lucia Capuccio.
Hi, Lucia.
Hi, good afternoon, Chair Grodnik and Commissioners. Okay, uh, this is a pre-hearing for a private application, um, from Clariden Holding LLC for a zoning special permit seventy-four nine three-two self-service storage facility located in sub-area two of Appendix J, designated areas within manufacturing districts. Um, as certified, this project would facilitate a new five-story, seventy-three thousand seven hundred and fifteen square foot self-service storage facility in Community District Seventeen, East Flatbush, Brooklyn. Um, during the public review period, the applicant submitted an amended application, also known as an A application, which would facilitate a new four-story, seventy-three thousand seven hundred and fifteen square foot self-service storage facility. And this application was certified on January thirtieth, and the public hearing is scheduled for this Wednesday. Um, as certified, the proposed development would be a seventy-three thousand seven hundred and fifteen square foot, um, self-service storage facility. The facility would have an FAR of one, um, at a height of sixty-two feet with a clock tower rising to eighty-five feet, um, twelve parking spots, and four loading berths would be provided. Um, this, as certified, this was the proposed elevation, um, with the roof at seventy-nine point four feet and a clock tower at a hundred point nine four feet. Uh, this view facing north shows the project area within the context of the Flatlands Fairfield Industrial Business Zone, or IBZ, which is overlaid here in purple. The project is in East Flatbush, is a neighborhood in the center of Brooklyn. The project area consists of one flag-shaped interior lot, shown here in orange. The lot currently has entrances on King's Highway and East Fifty-Sixth Street. For the proposed facility, only the entrance on King's Highway would be active. The entrance would be thirty feet wide with separated lanes for a vehicular driveway and a pedestrian walkway. Adjacent to the site on the eastern and southern portions is the MTA Bay Ridge branch. Um, it's a currently an active freight route. It is also currently planned in the future to be used for the Inter-Borough Express or IBX. The site is on the north side of the rail cut, and directly abuts the residential district to the north and the backyards of the two-story attached homes on Witty Lane. IBZs were created in two thousand and five and provide support incentives for industrial business relocation and expansion. The Flatlands Fairfield IBZ is one of six IBZs in Brooklyn, and it runs literally along the Bay Ridge branch, um, rail cut through East Flatbush, Canarsie, and Brownsville. Um, this show, um, this view shows a clearer picture of the, a regular shape of the lot. The site is currently unimproved and used for automobile parking. Historically, as shown in the inset, the lot has never been utilized as an industrial manufacturing use, going from Farland in the nineteen twenties to covered tennis courts in the nineteen fifties, and a school bus depot and automobile sales and parking from the mid nineteen nineties until today. The proposed action for this project is a special permit, seven four nine three-two. Um, to grant such a permit, the commission shall find that the zoning lot is appropriate for such self-service storage facility use, based on the land use characteristics of the proposed zoning lot and the surrounding area. Um, in making this determination, the commission may consider the following eight considerations. Um, the commission may also impose appropriate conditions and safeguards to minimize any adverse effects upon the existing uses in the surrounding area. The applicant has responded to these considerations, which are in your commission's briefing packet, and obviously they'll also be here on Wednesday to answer any questions. Um, on March fifteenth, Community Board Seventeen held a public hearing, and with a vote of zero in favor, fifteen against, and one abstaining voted to disapprove the application without conditions. Concerns from, from the community board included the self-storage use not serving local community needs, and the proposed building height being out of context with the surrounding neighborhood. On March twentieth, the Brooklyn Borough President held a public hearing for this application, and subsequently recommended to disapprove the application without conditions. Concerns from the Brooklyn Borough President included the site being inappropriate for self-storage use, and the self-storage use being incompatible with the city's economic goals for the Flatlands Fairfield IBZ. During public review, the applicant filed an amended application in response to the public comment that the proposed development was out of context within the existing, um, neighborhood. In the amended application, the proposed development would consist of a four-story and cellar building, um, that would rise to a total height of forty-nine feet. The proposed development would still consist of the same seventy-three thousand seven hundred and fifteen square feet of floor area, all of which would be dedicated to the self-service storage facility use. Um, this is a second rendering showing the amended proposed development, um, in context with this surrounding building. Um, this is a look at the elevation of the amended proposed development with the roof at sixty-six point four feet and no clock tower. This is the site plan of the amended proposed development. Development will set back thirty-four feet from the rear lot lines of the Witty Lane residences, and screening will be put in place along the perimeter. Additionally, there will be planted shrubs along the southern and eastern portions of the lot. Um, in summary, this is a private application for a zoning special permit seventy-four nine three-two. Um, thank you, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you very much. I, I expect there'll be a lot of questions for the applicant here. I will note, among them for me include how this application actually meets those economic findings for the permit, and also for the economic development goals of the city, um, you know, whether the applicant considered industrial uses as part of the build program here, the IBX, um, who's likely to use this, uh, if it were approved as a self-storage facility? facility, and more. But I'm going to spare you because we're going to pose those questions right to the applicant. Let me just see if there are, uh, any clarifying points before we go on to Wednesday's public hearing for the applicant. Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Osorio.
Maybe to add to the list, but also just curious, have you seen any plans to market this, this property for industrial recently?
Um, I have not.
Okay. If, if you can please make sure that they can share with us whether there's been plans.
Sure, yeah, the applicant will be prepared to speak too.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, with that, we're off to a public hearing on the King's Highway Self-Storage on Wednesday. Thank you, Lucia.
Thank you.
Ryan?
Uh, sure. So the eighth item on our agenda is the City Council's scope determination, uh, for the paperific rezoning. The City Council proposes to modify the text amendment to Appendix F, removing M I H option two and adding the deep affordability option. Uh, staff believe that this modification is within scope.
Okay, our procedure here is assent by a voice vote, which I am going to seek right now. Um, I'd like assent by voice vote to send a letter to the City Council that the modifications are within scope. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay.
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries, thank you.
Uh, the ninth item on our agenda is the City Council's modification scope determination for one forty-one dash oh-five one oh-ninth Avenue rezoning. Uh, the City Council proposes to modify the text amendment to Appendix F, again, removing M I H option two and adding the deep affordability option, and staff believe this modification is also within scope.
Seeing no questions, I will seek assent. Commissioner Ramperchad.
Just for the record, I was recused from.
Oh, yes, um, Commissioner Ramperchad is recused on this.
Okay, Commissioner Ramperchad is recused. I will seek assent by voice vote to send a letter to the councils, the modifications are within scope. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay.
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it, Ryan.
Right, uh, so moving on to future votes, uh, staff have prepared reports for consideration on May twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three for the Ocean Crest rezoning. I believe there is a response from the applicant in your package to some issues that were raised. Um, and also, the staff prepared a report on Forty-third Avenue de-mapping. Um, also for consideration on Wednesday is one-eleven Howard Avenue, which is our, uh, special district actions on Staten Island. Okay, just questions on this.
Commissioner Osorio.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, eh, thank you, Ryan, and on Ocean Crest, I, I wanted to acknowledge how thorough and detailed the response was, I greatly appreciate that. I have two quick follow-up questions. One is, um, on the solar plan, I'm wondering if, in addition to that, or whether there's an answer to the question on what type of clean, what type of generator is being proposed? Is it a clean generator or not? I'm not sure I understood whether the generator, what is the so, the, the fuel source for that ge, emergency generator? That's the first question. The, the second question is, I, I, I very much appreciate the rationale shared in terms of the evacuation, eh, plan, um, but I'm wondering if you can point out, or is there a policy that we could use to analyze sort of their explanation of their rationale and why they feel that the existing evacuation infrastructure is sufficient? What, what can we use to understand that? Cause, you know, I, I, I'm just wondering if there's any insight that you can provide in that.
Uh, I do not, I do recall from the, the hearing that the, um, that they did intend to have a sort of standard gas generator as a, as a backup, um, and they disclosed that, they, they were open to other options but didn't see that as, you know, anything else viable beyond that, the, um, at the ti, at this time. Uh, but I, in terms of the evacuation, um, I'd probably want to defer, it seems like it's a larger conversation with our Queen's Office about this, because we do have a lot of, uh, development on the peninsula that we should, uh, perhaps be doing something, a broader discussion.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Uh, okay, uh, so for post-hearing follow-up, uh, we have, uh, the Warner Street Commercial Development. I believe Kari Bailey is on Zoom, uh, with the staff recommendation. Let me just, yes.
Hi, good afternoon, Commissioners. Um, yeah, so as far as Warner Street, the Department of City Planning recommends approval of Warner Street Commercial Development in the Charleston neighborhood of Staten Island, Community District Three. Um, the actions of one, a special permit to allow for a large retail establishment in an M one dash one, and a city map amendment to officially add Warner Street to the city map. And also, there is three special Salt Richmond district, um, authorizations to waive or modify, uh, of cross-access connections, and to modify the topography and a modification of group parking regulations to facilitate a forty-seven thousand square foot commercial development that's located on Veterans Road West. So these actions are appropriate and have a reasonable land use rationale. Um, the product is aligned with and complements many of the other uses in the area of residential and commercial, and it provides sufficient landscaping and trees, it avoids traffic on local streets, and it builds a new city-owned, uh, street for public use. And these actions have been approved by the Staten Island Borough President and the Staten Island Community Board Three with no oppositions or conditions. And with that, the Department of City Planning, uh, recommends approval for this project. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Uh, on fourteen-hundred-story Avenue, this is the York Studios Project, staff is working with the applicant on a comprehensive response to issues raised at the hearing and will be at the June fifth review session with a comprehensive response. If there's any further questions, we can take that back. Okay, uh, seventy-one twenty New Utric Avenue rezoning, uh, Lucia is here with the staff recommendation.
Good afternoon, Chair Grodnik and Commissioners. The department supports this application, which would facilitate the development of a nine-story mixed-use building with a hundred units, of which thirty percent would be affordable with ground-floor commercial space at seventy-one twenty New Utric Avenue in the Bensonhurst neighborhood of Brooklyn, Community District Eleven. The change in zoning district will allow for growth along a major neighborhood corridor that is eighty feet wide and adjacent to an elevated train line with station, with a station steps away from the project area. The current zoning has been in place since nineteen sixty-one and does not include opportunities for growth. Furthermore, the C four-four L district is specifically designed for transit corridors and encourages a non-residential base, lifting and pulling back the housing from the subway tracks. It also requires a five-foot setback widening the sidewalk adjacent to the elevated rail line, which adlivens the pedestrian experience along New Utric Avenue. The zoning amendment will ensure that future developments in the project area will, will provide permanently income-restricted housing, which is sorely needed in this community district, that is, that has an increasing, an increase in population while producing some of the lowest levels of housing units and income-restricted units. A total of a hundred and seven new construction income-restricted units were built since two twenty-fourteen. The applicant provided a written response, uh, to comments made May twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three by the commission. Um, they submitted the response May twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three, and that can be found in the commission's briefing package. Additionally, the department echoes the Borough President's comments that the proposed development at this location would have the least impact on neighborhood character while simultaneously helping to address the housing shortage, and its proximity to transit makes it a location, uh, that's ideal for growth in the community district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, moving on, we have sixteen fifty-six West Tenth Street rezoning, and Demetrius is here with the staff recommendation.
Good afternoon.
You guys see the slide right?
Yeah.
Uh, before I begin, I want to inform you that we received a recommendation from the Brooklyn Borough President's Office after the public hearing, and that he approves of the project with no conditions. Also, the applicant submitted a letter this past week clarifying the existing conditions compared to the new proposed conditions, which will provide a thirty-foot rear yard at the ground-floor level and a thirty-five-foot rear yard above the second floor to address potential, um, concerns from local residents. The follow-up for an application that was certified back on February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, with a public hearing that was held on May tenth, two thousand and twenty-three. The department supports this application, which would facilitate the development of a six-story mixed-use building with twenty-seven units, seven of which would be affordable with ground-floor community facility space in the Bensonhurst neighborhood of Brooklyn Community District Eleven. Change in zoning districts will allow for growth on a resident, on a residential street that connects to two major neighborhood corridors that are well-served by transit. In deeper, in deeper context to the growth, the R six-eight district change will bring the developments on Lot twenty-two and Lot forty-two into compliance due to the already six-story-built forms while maintaining the character of the street. The zoning text amendment will make sure that future developments in the project area will, will provide affordable housing, which is much needed in this district that has increased in the population while producing very few housing units and even fewer income-restricted units in the borough over the past decade. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Before you go, Vice Chair Knuckles.
Uh, yes, on the community facility space, uh, just refresh my recollection, was there a commitment, uh, or at least unidentified tenant for that space?
Yes, so the current space has been occupied by Better Living Community Facility, and they're gonna keep the space, but, uh, um, the community floor, um, for a foot is reflection not just the ground floor but the sub-seller and seller as well.
Okay, and Better Living is?
It's a, uh, um, older adult community facility that's been there since two thousand and thirteen. Um, it serves mostly local residents, anywhere between seventy to a hundred, uh, patrons per week.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Great, thank you. Ryan, anything else today?
For no further items on our agenda.
Okay, before we close, let me just, uh, give a special thank you to you for your assistance in changing our, uh, methods here a little bit on the pre-hearing, uh, recommendations. I know it's, it's always a fair amount of work to make any, any change in a city agency, and really appreciate, uh, your, your efforts in that regard. And to all the Commissioners and staff, uh, writ large here, thanks, we'll see you all on Wednesday morning. With that, we're adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Um, are you, I, I, I think we, we need to talk, um...